Good evening. I'm Cindy Jerome, and it is my privilege to be your town moderator. Welcome to Dummerston's first ever virtual town information meeting. This is not the town meeting we're used to. There will be no voting this evening, no making of motions or amendments. Instead, this is an opportunity for Dummerston voters to ask questions about the articles on the town meeting warning. Announcements: This meeting is being streamed live to Comcast Channel 1085 and YouTube and Facebook at Brattleboro Community TV. BCTV coverage of the meeting is made possible by sponsors. These are the good folks who have helped this happen. Here's how to participate in the meeting. Please turn off your video and mute your microphone. If you're joining by phone, you can use star six to mute and to unmute. Make sure your name is displayed correctly. Use rename under participants or hover over the blue square on your video. And we'd like to see your full name in case you're asking any questions. If you wish to speak, you can use the raise hand feature that you'll find the reactions button. If you don't see it there, you'll find it in the participants list. If joining by phone, you can use star nine to raise or lower your hand. The chat will not be monitored for questions or comments on agenda items. Use raise hand to participate. I will call your name or your phone number if joining by phone to speak, just the last four numerals. When I do that, BCTV will ask you to turn on your video and unmute your microphone. They will make it possible for you to do so as well. Please identify yourself by stating your name. Those of you who saw the instructions saw something about saying your street or neighborhood. We don't think that's necessary unless you want to share that with us. After you're done speaking, please stop your video and mute your microphone. As each agenda item is completed, I will ask the director to lower all hands to start the line for the next agenda item. This year, you'll be voting on every article on a paper ballot. Many of you have already called the town office and had your ballot mailed to you. It's too late to request an absentee ballot be mailed to you now, but you may call the town clerk and arrange to pick one up when the office is open. This tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday and Monday, the hours are nine to three. Lori, interrupt me if there is a change to the hours in these last days before Tuesday. In-person voting will be on the usual town meeting day, next Tuesday, March 2, in the basement of the Dummerston Center Congregational Church from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Note that while town meeting is usually, and voting is usually in the school, this year it's at the church in the basement. The printing of the town report was delayed. Some of you may have received yours, but for those who haven't, I invite you to go to Dummerston.org where the homepage has a link to an electronic version of the entire report. We'll be following the warning on page 67. I'll ask those of you who will be reviewing budgets with us to start by noting what page you're on. There are no known errors in this year's town report. Tonight's information meeting is an opportunity to ask questions. It's not intended to be an opportunity to convince your fellow citizens to vote one way or the other as we do at town meeting. You may speak once on an article. You may speak a second time only if no one else wishes to speak for the first time. Again, please turn off your video and mute your microphone. If joining by phone, use star six to mute and to unmute. If you wish to speak, use the raise hand feature under reactions, or if it's not there, under participants. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand. So Article One is the elections, and we plan to allow the candidates for select board because there is one contested race to speak each for two minutes, to introduce themselves and to tell us a little bit about their background. Rebecca Latka. Yes, I see you. You're on. There you go. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Rebecca Latka. I live up Stickney Brook on Hopkins Road, and I am running for a two-year term on the select board. I moved to Vermont several years ago, and Dummerston's a really special place to me. I'm looking forward to the possibility of serving on the select board and, you know, Dummerston being so special to me as it is to all of us. You know, I'm really looking forward to preserving what's excellent about Dummerston and also looking to, you know, look ahead and see what changes can be made to keep us thriving and a happy community. So I'm really looking forward to the possibility of this and, yeah, getting to know more of you and working as a team. Thank you.
Cindy, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Zeke Goodband is running for a three-year term. Can you unmute yourself, Zeke? There you go.
Oh, did? Okay. Shall I start again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I'm Zeke Goodband. I live on Houghton Road. I've been a Dummerston resident for 20 years and lived in the area for about just under 40 years. I'm an orchardist and a nurseryman and a shepherd to a small flock of sheep. I served on the select board for a number of years, and several of those as the chair or vice chair. I'm a frugal fellow. I possess an even temperament. I'd like to think I have a sense of humor. I love working on budgets and listening to all sides of an issue before coming to a decision. Wayne Emery. Some of you know Wayne Emery in town. He was on the board when I first came on, and he said it, I think, better than I'm going to. And he said, being on the select board, he just wanted to do what was best for Dummerston. And I've got about 40 more pages plus a slide presentation that I'd like to present tonight. But I think in the interest of brevity, I'll just say that I think my experience and knowledge of Dummerston and statutes, ordinances, and bylaws will be an asset to the next select board as we deal with the issues that come before the town.
Thank you, Zeke. Todd Davidson is also running for the three-year term. Todd.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just checking the audio. So, good evening. My name's Todd Davidson, and I'm running for the three-year term on the Dummerston Select Board. We live on Middle Road, and I'm a retired 20-year U.S. Air Force veteran. I think I have some abilities that I can offer the town. And throughout my work life, from my military career to my current place in government contracting, I've gained some insights into organizing issues and ideas into some practical approaches. I'm very open to varying viewpoints. Look forward to continuing to learn about Dummerston and offer my insights and experiences to help our town run smoothly. With family in Dummerston and our plans to live here for the rest of our lives, we're wholly invested in the community. Christine and I moved to Dummerston in October of 2018 in order to be closer to family, and they're nearby with her dad over on Miller Road and her mother down in Lyden, Massachusetts. Christine has found her niche within the Dummerston Conservation Commission and has just completed volunteer guardian ad litem training. So now I feel it's my turn to volunteer my time and effort to support this wonderful town. Recognizing it's been a difficult year, I look forward to making sure that Dummerston residents have all the services they need and that we're positioned to return to what will be the new normal. Although I've met many people through Zoom, I do look forward to meeting many more of you in person. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Todd. There are no other contested races, but if there is anyone else who's a candidate for an office and would like to say something, please raise your hand now. I'm seeing no hands, so we will move on to Article Two. Shall the voters approve the auditor's report of the town accounts? There isn't normally any discussion on this during town meeting, but if this is something you want to talk about, please raise your hand. I'm seeing no hands, so I will move on to Article Three. Shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes? Again, this usually doesn't generate discussion, but if you'd like to talk about it, use the raise hand feature under reactions, or if you're on the phone, press nine, star nine, to raise your hand. I see no hands. Article Four: Shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $210,000 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the capital fund for future capital needs? Maria Glabach on the select board, I believe you were going to speak to this. So star nine, no, star six to unmute yourself. Maria? There you go.
Yep. So we're asking the voters again for $210,000. This is exactly what we asked for last year. And to offset, you know, there's going to, the next few articles will speak to what we're actually going to purchase with the $210,000, but the same amount that we requested last year.
Thank you, Maria. I don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to go on to Article Five. Shall the voters authorize the following capital expenditure, the purchase of a dump truck at a price not to exceed $170,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund? Terry Chapman from the select board, I believe you're going to speak to this.
Yes. This is to replace the 2012 International. It was slated to be replaced this year and believe we can do it for hundreds, well, be $170,000 or less. And the town highway would be glad to replace it. I think at this point, this fiscal year, we have spent about $10,000 in repairs and I think $11,000 in repairs last year, so.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Again, if you have a question or a comment, please use the raise hand function or press star nine to raise your hand if you're calling on the phone. I see no raised hands, so I'm going to move on to Article Six. Shall the voters authorize-
There is a raised hand, Cindy. Michelle Sharrier.
Ah, Michelle Sharrier.
Hi. Hi, Cindy.
Hello, Michelle.
Hi. Let me start my video here. I just had a quick question about that dump truck. Is it a new truck or is it a used truck? Can the select board speak to that?
Terry, can you answer that? Can you be muted? There you go.
It was put in in 2012, so the truck is almost nine years old. But it was bought new in 2012.
But we're purchasing a new one. That's what I'm asking about, the new truck.
Right. We're trying, this $170,000 would allow us to replace this 2012.
With what, a new truck or a used-
Yeah, the new truck, yes.
It's a new truck. Very good. Thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Catherine Gormley has a question.
Yes, I have a question for Terry Chapman. I'm wondering about the old truck that you would be replacing, hoping to replace, the 2012. What plans are there to recoup any investment in that by reselling?
I believe that the highway foreman is looking to trade in with it. But I'd have to, if Lee's online, he would be better to answer that. But I believe this is going to be a trade-in.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know.
Okay, I do not see any other hands. So I'll ask that we clear all hands, please, and we will move on to Article Seven. No, Article Six. Shall the voters authorize the following capital expenditure, the purchase of two sets of gear for the fire department at a price not to exceed $4,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund? Rich Cogliano from the fire department can speak to this. Go ahead and unmute Rich. There you go.
Okay, there we go. It gave me an error message, said the host will not let me unmute myself. So thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Rich Cogliano. I am the Assistant Fire Chief for the West Dummerston Fire Department. And this is an ongoing capital expense that we are incurring. We have about 28 sets of bunker gear, fire gear, the big suits on here. This stuff that we wear out when we go to fires. And per federal rules, we have to replace this every 10 years. It wears down. It breaks down over time. So we are incrementally replacing this, so we're not, we're trying not to do a very large lump sum purchase of 20 or 30 sets of gear. We really want to break it down. So last year, we asked for a couple of sets to be asked in the capital budget. We were given that, so we're looking for a couple more this year. In addition to this, we've also purchased, I think, three more sets this year out of our own funds. So we're replacing a few every year. That way, when we can get on a cycle to replace them. So that's what this is. It's replacing old outdated bunker gear for our frontline firefighters.
Thank you. Oops. Thank you, Rich. Are there any questions on this item, on this article? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article Seven. Shall the voters authorize the following capital expenditure, the purchase of computers at a price not to exceed $6,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund? Charlotte Miranis will speak to this. There you are.
Yep, there I am. Our IT professional recommends replacing computers every three to four years. And our zoning computer is going up to nine years old this year. The treasures computer is going up to four, will be four years old this year. And the select board would like to purchase a laptop for the, hopefully, new select board assistant. So that they run about $1,500 to $1,700 apiece, depending with the software that we need for antivirus and safety. And so it probably won't be 6,000, but it was, a little extra was put in because you just never know. That's it.
Thank you, Charlotte. Are there any questions about this article? Paul Norman? You're all set. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. My question is essentially, what if you don't spend all the money that's being allocated for these various expenses taken from the capital item? Does the residual stay in the capital fund? Or do we, or do we, does it just go out to the general fund?
The residual stays in the capital fund like it does whenever there's a purchase that comes in below budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte. And Michelle Sharrier has her hand up. We can hear you, Michelle, if you want to go-
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Charlotte, are these PCs anticipated to be essentially the modern version so that they have the capability to do what we're doing tonight, which is, you know, to, with video and audio, et cetera, et cetera? We didn't, one didn't used to have to assume that that was true in a typical office, but times have changed, so I'd appreciate knowing.
We use Bill Vermuth Computers for our IT, and he does purchases for us. I'll start my video. Everything that he's gotten for us so far has had solid state drives and good video/audio capabilities, so I would assume they would.
Very good. Glad to hear it. Good luck. Thanks for your time.
Any other questions on Article Seven? Okay, we'll lower all hands and move to Article Eight. Shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $507,490, of which $314,907 shall be raised by taxes and $192,583 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022? Zeke Goodband, I think you're presenting this along with Maria Glabach.
All right. So Maria and I will go over this general fund budget with you. I don't know how many of you have the town report before you or access to it on the town website. But if this were a regular town meeting, I'd ask you to turn to page 20 in your hymnal. And this would be the statement of revenue, estimated and actual, and for the proposed budget year of beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. We estimate, we're going to have a surplus that we're going to apply, See, the next line down lists the taxes that we propose to raise to meet our proposed expenses. Then going down through that list, liquor licenses, dog licenses, fees for issuing licenses, list all the other non-tax sources of revenue that we expect to collect. Turning over to page 21. We have other revenue and donations, miscellaneous revenue, animal impoundment fees for total general fund revenue of $507,490. Below that, on page 21, is a summary of municipal taxes. And you'll see it lists what was approved last year at town meeting, voted 2020, and then what we're proposing for this coming fiscal year. Now, Maria, you have anything to add before we go into the general fund expenditures?
That sounds good to me, Zeke. Yep, I think we can go ahead right into the expenditures.
Okay. So if you'll turn to page 25, if you have access to that. You'll see, we tried, knowing that we were going to go with an Australian ballot this year because of the virus, we thought it wise to try to stay as close as we could to what voters approved at the town meeting last March of 2020. Knowing that you wouldn't have the opportunity to amend items from the floor or discuss them like we usually do, we thought try to stay with what had been debated and approved last year. So going, so we tried to level fund as much as we could. Under the first section on 25, you'll notice the one big difference is under wages clerical. We're proposing, we're looking for a select board assistant. We've sort of been getting along. Maria Glabach has been serving as a select board assistant for a few years now. And Lori Frichette was a very competent select board assistant, and I'm sure we'd welcome her back in a heartbeat if she wanted to take the position again. But we feel like we need someone who can help us with, or help the board with telephone calls, doing some research, just some of the background collection of information that we need and that we're trying to do, divide up between the five members of the board as it is now and try to get everything done. The select board's become more complicated than it was when I first came on the board. We have more issues that are coming up, more regulations, and we don't want to miss any opportunities or, you know, have something fall between the cracks. So we're looking for a little bit of help. So that's the big item here that we're, is different from previous years. Turning the page, going down, pretty much not many changes. You know, we're proposing the same amount for the sheriff. Rescue Inc.'s assessment is going up 1%. Not too many changes. The fire department, we're keep, is being level funded. Emergency management, we've cut that somewhat to just covering the expenses of keeping the generators that we have around town maintained. Health and welfare, the social services. We rely on the Social Services Committee to vet all these organizations and the requests and ask them to level fund for this budget year, which they did. They switched some figures around a little, but essentially coming up with the same amount of $13,795. Cemeteries, level funded, library level funded, as are items under the conservation section of our budget. Farmland protection at $5,000. I believe that will bring that fund up to somewhere around $46,000. The county tax, I'm surprised to say, actually is going down a little. It's been going up in past years quite a bit, and I've gone to all their budget- And I've gone to all their budget meetings in the past and tried to intimidate them into holding the line with, without success. And the one year that I didn't go, they lowered their amount. I wish I'd known that. I would have saved a lot of trips to New Fane. So we have general fund expenditures of $507,490. Maria, anything to add?
That sounds good, what you presented, Zeke.
Thank you both. I see Ruth Hoffman has her hand raised. Go ahead, Ruth.
Thank you, Cindy. So this question is for the select board, especially focused on page 25. Special reference to wages under administration, but it does apply across the budget. I would like a more complete answer than just level funding for why there is no even cost of living adjustment for our very valuable employees who worked all year under COVID and are not getting any raise?
Zeke, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, we felt we were uncertain. I think David Backsendale may want to speak to this and maybe other members also. But we felt our revenues for the, this fiscal year, when we were making this budget, were uncertain. We had increases in our health insurance that we went along with. We also had increases in retirement. I guess we felt, we were hope, well, we appreciate the work that everyone has done from the road crew to elected officials in the town office and appointed officials. We were hopeful that we could hold the line this year, see what, how our revenues came in and look forward to the following year where we might take a look at what we could do then with a more certain revenue stream. David, would you like to?
David Backsendale from the select board, would you like to speak to this? There you go.
Yes. Ruth is absolutely correct that the employees are a tremendous asset to our community. And we really appreciate the fine job they've done during these difficult, this difficult year. What we did was take a look at how the compensation package, packages in Dumerson compared with four other towns in our, in our region, New Fane, Townsend, Guilford, and Putney. And we took a look at the entire compensation package, including wages and health benefits, retirement, the entire panoply of salary and benefits. And we concluded that our town actually has quite a favorable and generous overall overall picture. And, and so get, on one hand, desire, the desire to, to, to level fund. And on the other hand, the fact that our package is, is actually very favorable. We thought it was appropriate to, to not to offer salary increases this year.
Does anyone else have any questions on Article 8? Molly Stoner, I see your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Cindy. I just was wondering, I noticed that this year we're bringing forward $57,000 in money from last year, right? Am I reading that correctly? And I'm wondering if there's any way, if that were to happen next spring, if some of those unspent monies could be allocated to a cost of living bonus or benefit? Or I don't know if that's even possible in the future. You know, like in the next year, if there's money, if there's a surplus to be able to say, actually, we have enough to have given you an increase. Just wondering if anyone knows the mechanism for that.
Zeke, you have an answer for that?
The surplus, surpluses are generally from two years prior. I don't think there'd be anything that would prevent the next board if they got to the end of the fiscal year and things were looking rosier. To, I think the process would be to hold a special town meeting in order for the voters to vote up, say, a bonus equivalent to a cost of living raise. I think, so there would be some ways of doing that, I think.
Okay. Any other questions on Article 8? I see no hands, so lower all hands, please, and we'll move to Article 9. Shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $560,535, of which $376,700 shall be raised by taxes and $184,528 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022? Zeke, you'll be speaking to this as well? Will you unmute yourself, please?
Okay. Yeah, a couple of my wives have all said, most of my communication is non-verbal. So I thought I could get away with it tonight. But if you go to page 12 in your town report, let's see, you'll see the balance sheet and then for the highway fund and a fund balance, you'll see of $54,028.21. And that's a surplus that we're going to be applying to the highway fund budget this year. And Maria, if I could ask you to explain that to voters while I keep shuffling papers here? Oh, here it is. Great.
Do you still want Maria Glabach to speak?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Maria, if she can be unmuted, please. There you go.
Okay. So the surplus of $54,000. Last year, we did not have a surplus. Historically, we've always had like a two-year lag in using a surplus, just like for the general fund. Last year, this, the surplus was questioned for the fiscal year we're currently in. So no surplus was taken last year. It was just, just retained in the highway fund as, and so we consulted with the LCT and they advised us on how to account for the surplus and that the two-year lag was acceptable accounting. So this year, we actually went back to including the surplus. And hence, that's where we came up with the, with the balance in the fund was $54,028. And that's how we arrived at the surplus to apply to the proposed budget.
Okay. So, all right. Any questions about that?
I do see Paul Normandow's hand.
Thank you. On that same page, Zeke and Maria, I'm looking at the highway fund comparative balance sheet. And the ending balance on June 30 was $70,583.51. Now, why doesn't that carry forward to the beginning balance of 630 to 630? Well, it should be the beginning balance of 630, 20. I don't understand these two columns. Because usually when you have a balance in one year, at the end of one year, it should carry forward to the beginning of the subsequent year. And these just seem to start from June 30 and end at June 30 of the same year. So can somebody explain that to me?
Maria, do you want to address that? I think you just touched on that earlier. The idea of the two-year delay, I think, is relevant. But you are muted right now. There you go.
Yeah, I think this, we actually don't do this balance. This may be more appropriate for Charlotte to answer. I'm looking at this balance sheet to, I don't think that the, Paul, you're thinking that the $54,000 is a, is a beginning balance. It, it's actually listed as an asset due from the general fund. I'm not, I I almost think this is better for Charlotte to answer because we, we actually don't create this report, but Charlotte does. So she may be able to explain.
Charlotte Anis, Town Treasurer, can you address this?
These are both the end of the year balances. They're not, it's not the end of the year 2019 and the beginning of the year 2020. It's the end of the year 2019 and the end of the year 2020. If you, I mean, if you look up at the, at the general fund, it's the same thing. The total liabilities and fund balance ended 106,000 and begin at 22,000. It's not, you're carrying, you're, you have a lot of activity between the end of the year and the beginning of the year. I don't know how to explain it any better than that unless I just sat down and looked at it and came back to you with it.
Okay. Are there any other questions on Article 9? We've just kind of started this article. Shall we go back to Zeke or Maria to go through the expenditures?
Okay. On page 22, we list the actual and estimated expenditures for the highway fund. And we've combined, we used to break out winter and non-winter wages. And we've combined them this year. We have, see, we have the same amount, $95,000 for repaving salt and sand. We've tried to keep down. We noticed quite a large sand pile at the town garage. We thought we could maybe cut back a little. Let's see. Under diesel fuel, we thought when we were making this budget in October and November, December, that we could shave a little off of that budget. And recent events, you know, I have to question whether that was such a great idea. But we'll see how it goes. Our total proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 is $560,535.
Thank you, Zeke. Are there any further questions on Article 9? Seeing none, lower all hands, please.
Maria, have any other comments, Maria? Okay.
We'll move on to Article 10. Shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $5,000 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the Highway Structures Fund for future structures projects? Maria Glabach from the select board, I believe you're going to address this one.
Okay. So when we, we met back this fall with Lee Chamberlain, the road foreman, he had asked for us to put in $5,000 for future structures projects. Something, you know, a large culvert, you know, bridge work, any type of, when we say structures, it has to do with, with the road. And that's why we are requesting $5,000 to put into the Structures Fund for future projects.
Thank you, Maria. Are there any questions about Article 10? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, sorry, Sam Farwell has a question.
Hi.
Go ahead, Sam.
I look like I'm in a cave or something. I'm sitting in my car. Is there a balance on this Structures Fund? Or is this the first? Are we creating the fund at this, this year?
Maria?
Right. No, this is a fund that, that we've had for, for quite a while. I'm flipping through the book to see what the actual balance is on it.
Okay, if it's in the book, I'll find it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, this is not, this is not a newly created fund. No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Charlotte, if you want to respond to that question, I'll call on you next, even though someone else had their hand up first.
The balance, the current balance in the, well, not the current balance. The balance at the end of fiscal year 2020 was $11,263.20. It's on page 13. Currently, there's about $34,000 in that account from a highway grant from the state of Vermont. They gave towns money because we couldn't apply for grants this year. So it's a nice balance.
Thank you, Charlotte. Jody Normandow has her hand up. Go ahead, Jody.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm kind of confused. I'm not looking at one of your, at a town report. I'm looking at it online and none of my numbers match up with what Zeke's talking about. So what I'm looking at is on page 23 on my online bit. And it says Highway Structures Fund. And there's zeros and zeros in there. So I'm a little bit confused about this right now.
Jody, are you looking at actual and estimated expenditures? Or are you looking at the Highway Structures Fund revenue?
It says Highway Structures Fund, actual and estimated expenditures. It's got the budget 20, actual 20, budget 21, and proposed budget 22 with all zeros on the last two.
Charlotte, I wonder if you can address this? Or Maria, if you want to?
Sure. Jody, if you turn to page 18, if you go to page 18, what you're looking at is the expenditures and where we're actually, the $5,000 and where we're actually, the $5,000, we want to fund it as revenue into the fund.
Is that under the, oh, I see. Down under the Highway Fund comparative balance sheet?
On page 18, it's the Highway Structures Fund Statement of Revenue.
It's, I was telling me it's page 18 is where I am. That's why I'm confused. I don't know where you are. Is it the comparative balance sheet?
No, it's not a balance sheet. No.
All right. I guess I'll have to look at this later, Maria, because I've not been able to follow you all because the different pages are different from what's online.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, when you, when you do get your town report, check on page 18, right in the middle of the page. There's a statement of revenue for the Highway Structures Fund.
Page 18. Let me just check here. Statement of revenue and estimated and actual.
That's correct. Yes.
Because that says it's 24 on my computer. But then I found the page 18. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions about Article 10? I've seen some hands raised and then go back down again. There are none raised right now. So I'm going to move on to Article 11. Shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $18,540 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the Highway Blasting and Ledge Crushing Fund for future blasting and crushing? I believe that either Road Foreman Lee Chamberlain or Teri Chapman from the Select Board will address this. Teri, do you want to unmute? I'm not sure. I see Lee.
There we go. I'm unmuted. I don't know if Lee is on. Last year, we bought the gravel pit. Last year, we set up this Highway Blasting and Ledge Crushing Fund and added money into it. And the agreement was that Putney would do the same. And I believe it's in about four years that we're going to need to do the blasting. So instead of asking the taxpayers for one month's sum, we're putting so much aside, as is Putney, every year so that when we have it, we, the fourth year, it won't be one big amount.
Sounds good. Are there any questions about Article 11? Ruth Hoffman, I see your hand up. Unmute? You unmuted and muted again in the same option. There you go. Go ahead.
There I go. Okay, I just wanted to mention, for those who don't know, I'm the, one of the town auditors. So to go along with what people were saying about the blasting reserve fund, if you look on page 23, which, where we talk about expenditures, that's why there is no matching blasting fund proposed expenditures because we are only saving it up now. And not until we come to that expense will there be a matching blasting fund expenditures in the year we need to start spending the money.
Thank you for that point of information, Ruth.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything about Article 11? Okay, we'll lower all hands and move on to Article 12. Shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840? We don't normally have anyone necessarily speak to this, but is there anyone who has a question or who would like to speak to this tax-exempt status that's on our warning every year? Okay, I see no hands. So I'm going to move on to Article 13. Shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840? And Billy Slade, I saw your hand. If you can unmute yourself and speak to this?
Sure. Hello, everyone. As you well know, this was a very unusual year. And certainly here at camp, we felt the effects of that. We were not able to have camp last summer for the first time in 103 years. And we're very hopeful that the camp will be happening this summer. It's looking more and more like that will happen with a lot of COVID protocols and procedures in place. But we were still able to keep six Dummerston residents on our payroll last summer and hired them to do some work, things that we couldn't do during regular camp, like paint the dining room floor and blaze some trails in the woods and things like that. So it wasn't a total bust. We had swim lessons. We were able to do some of the things. But I'm very hopeful that this year, camp will be able to continue in the way that, that everyone so looks forward to it. And I thank you all for your support over the past rough year.
Thank you, Billy. Does anyone have a question about this article? Remember to raise your hand. You can use the function in the Reactions button. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. I see no hands. So I will move on to Article 14. Shall the voters of the town of Dummerston authorize the town to withdraw from the Wyndham Southeast School District? I'm going to call on Michelle Green. Michelle is one of Dummerston's two representatives to the Wyndham Southeast School District. And she's also the Chair of the WSESD Communication Council. So Michelle, there you are. Go ahead.
Hi. So I will just walk through the two articles to be sure that they're clear and people understand what they're voting on.
If you can, I'm going to ask you to stick to Article 14. And then we'll go, come back to you for Article 15.
Sure. Sure. So the first question, as read, what is asking very specifically? Do we want our school to withdraw from the Wyndham Southeast School District that is currently comprised of Putney, Dummerston, Brattleboro, and Guilford? That, just to clarify, because there was some confusion in the beginning and people were thinking that this was a question asking to dissolve our merger. That's not the question. The question would just be asking Dummerston residents if they would like to, for their town, our town, to withdraw from being part of the combined school district.
Are there any questions regarding Article 14 or any comments? Molly Stoner, I see your hand.
The host is asking me to start a video. I'm not quite sure what that's about.
Well, you know, show us your picture like you did the last time you spoke. You're unmuted, but you haven't started. There you go. Now you're muted, however.
I know. I keep getting notes, things, I keep getting pop-ups that say a host is asking me to...
Molly, Molly, that's because we, in order to unmute yourself or put your video on, you need to be given permission. So he's giving you permission once Cindy calls on you.
Oh, it's just, okay. I didn't get that the first time. So thank you. I just wondered, I've been at a lot of meetings, so I don't actually have questions about this. But I wondered if Michelle could show any of the information sheets that have been shown at some of the recent meetings to give taxpayers some of... The Communication Council made a really, really informative form. I didn't know if that was on the plan tonight.
No, I don't believe that Michelle can share documents with us, but she can certainly tell us all exactly where to go to find them. I've seen that information online quite a bit lately, and I'm sure Michelle can share that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. We have, if anyone wants to visit the wsesu.org page, so our school district website, right in the very front, there's a banner. And there is one form called the short document. It's two pages. And it is probably the most pertinent details that we, we thought to try to be concise. And then there's the long form in that page. That document is six pages of more in-depth information comparing the changes and what it would look like both in the district versus if there was a dissolution process. And so again, that's on the, the district website's front page.
WSESD.org.
WSESU, which is the Supervisory Union. Yeah, a little...
Thank you. Terry Crockett, I see your hand up. Lara Moore. There you are. Unmute yourself and you're ready to go. Yes.
Okay. I was hoping that in this information meeting that we would have a, someone to speak to both sides of this article to give a reasoned argument for either voting for it or against it. Is that, is that possible?
Well, as we said at the beginning, this is an information meeting rather than an attempt to convince each other to vote one way or another. But if someone would like to give a fairly dispassionate presentation of the pros and cons of this, Michelle, I bet you could do that. And others are invited to raise their hand as well.
I can share some feedback, but I would rather give the opportunity to someone in the town if they want to speak first.
Okay. I see a hand from Tammy. I think it's McNamara, but your whole name isn't spelled out on my screen. But Tammy, if you want to, there you go. You're unmuted. There you are. Go ahead.
Hi there. It is McNamara. Tammy McNamara. I'm a Dummerston resident, parent of two children in the Dummerston school system. Like Ms. Stoner, I have attended a number of meetings. The question that I would like to bring today is, has the Select Board in the town considered what the ramifications of this article will be on the school? The teachers in the school, the children in the school, the parents of the town? Because I have some deep concerns about that. And so I, I would like to put that question before the group.
I'm going to answer that, Tammy. And if the Select Board wants to expand on it, they can. I think you might be assuming that the Select Board put this on the warning because they might be in favor of it. That is not the case. They were asked to put it on the warning by the school district. Is that right, Zeke? Yes, yes. And they did that as a courtesy, as all the other local towns are doing. So I don't think the Select Board has looked deeply into this question as a board at all. And they have not taken a position on it. Does anyone from the Select Board want to add to that? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. So Michelle, I'm not seeing any hands. Would you like to just kind of lay out the pros and cons that seem to be at issue here?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to be very careful to just try to stick to the facts that we're providing. I'm not really in a position to call something a pro or a con. I think that's a very individual assessment made by the person who's voting. The, an advantage, I'll, I'll call it. Basically, if our school district were to dissolve, were to leave the school district, they would have their own school board that only oversees Dummerston School. And it would, in that sense, it would look similar to what this town has seen in the past. And so that is the main, the main benefit unless somebody, again, from the public wants to chime in with more thoughts on that. But basically, it'd be about what your representation looks like and having your, your school board of just Dummerston residents meeting here in town, representing only the students in our town, in our school. So that's, that's what you would gain. The changes that would occur if that were to happen, because the districts were state-formed and put into this forced merge, the, the, the high school district, the BUHS 6 district was also merged into our new school district. That district cannot be reformed, even if all the towns decide to leave. So there won't be a regional high school. And what would happen would be that the towns would pay tuition to send their kids for the grades they don't, they don't offer to a high school. It doesn't have to be BUHS. But that would be for a future school board to decide. There's a path to reform a regional high school district. But it, you know, it would entail all four towns wanting that, all boards going through all of the steps, presenting it to voters, all the towns voting. And it couldn't happen until after each town was independent and outside of the WSESD. So it would be a bit of a process. So that would be, that's a major change versus the going back. Because, because there would not be that affiliation with the high school, it does change the cost of what it, when we look at our current budget, what our per pupil spending would be. And so our, our per pupil spending goes up almost over $3,000 per student. If we were to use the exact same budget that is currently being devised. Now, a future board could create a new budget. And I can't speak of that because it doesn't exist. But, but looking at the budget that our school board is asking people to vote on and, and support because we believe it's necessary for the school to operate its best, that budget, if it were just simply moved over and turned into a freestanding Dummerston School District budget, we do lose valuable deductions that could be applied. And so there's a dramatic increase, and that would have to be addressed. So those are sort of the bigger, biggest changes, you know, that as a citizen, Michelle's a citizen, would want to be thinking about. So I don't know. If anybody else wants to share, I, I'm, we would still, let me say this too. We would still be part of the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union. That's that SU. So we have always been, and we have equal representation on that board. And that is the service that, that covers our special education, our transportation, our food services, our administrative things coming out of the administrative office, tech support, financial oversight superintendent. And then the, the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Social Justice are all part of that. So that, those services would not be interrupted in any way at all.
Thank you, Michelle, very much. Suzanne Weinberg, you, you have a hand up. If you want to unmute? There you go.
Try, I was trying to about four times, and it wasn't loving me. Yeah, I just wanted to add that there have been some good letters in the Reformer and also in the Front Porch Forum, both for and against. When, there was a very good letter from a bunch of Dummerston teachers and other concerned citizens that was urging us to vote no. And then there was a, a letter from Jody Normandow in the Front Porch Forum that was urging us to vote yes. And so for the person who was asking for pro and cons, if you look back in the Front Porch Forum, you can see those arguments.
Thank you, Suzanne. Larry, you had your, you spoke earlier on this issue, although, as I recall, it was just a request for information. So if you would like to speak again, I will allow that. Larry Crockett?
Yes.
There you go.
Am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
So I wondered if, if we, if the vote was successful and we did withdraw from the union, would there need to be a special town meeting to form a new school board and have elections?
There would be. It's, it's a, it's not, it's not a straightforward process. And that would be us discussing the next article. But yes, if all of the steps worked out and so that the town was able to withdraw, then there would be an election held to elect a new school board for Dummerston that would actually be paid for by the Wyndham Southeast School District. And they would be reimbursed when that separation finally happened.
Thank you, Michelle. Jody Normandow, I see your hand up. If you can unmute yourself. There you go. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify one thing that I think is confusing some people. If we get out of our merger and go back to our regular board, we don't have choice. Like a lot of people think, oh, goody, I can send my kid anywhere. What happens, I do believe... What happens, I do believe, is that the school board would identify maybe three different schools that they could, that the students could go to. Probably one of them would be the high school. And I don't know, you know, who else they could be. It could be Bellas Falls, it could be New Fane or whatever, but it's not considered having choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
So I would just clarify that the timeline, as it was explained to us through Andy Skarsinski, our superintendent, looking at the timeline of a board going into itself, there would be a short period where basically that does, because the three schools, she's, Jody's correct, the town would be designating three schools. But that would also be pending voter approval. And so it would, you would start as choice and then the school board would be able to present the options back to the community and they would vote on, on approving those three schools as their option or staying in choice. And that's, that's how it would work out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 14? Julian Giordano. We see you. Can you, there you go. Go ahead.
Hi there. Yes, hi. I had attended a meeting last night where some information was presented regarding tax implications for Dummerston residents and the information form referencing that taxes would increase especially for smaller towns like us should we unmerge? And I am just wondering if somebody can clarify that and outline what that looks like.
Michelle, do you have that information?
I can just sort of cover that. There is a form that is available. It's hiding deep on the website. I'm sorry to have to tell you. And if you aren't familiar with school financing, I think it's a little complex for most people. But again, hypothetical situation, a hypothetical budget was created using the current budget. So it was just using the exact same numbers. I, I can read, what did we write? Any town that withdraws from the district will have an increase in spending per pupil if they continue providing the same services and programs as are currently available under the W S E S D. This would result in an increase to the tax rate for that town and possibly for other towns remaining in the W S E S D with smaller districts feeling a greater impact and increase in tax rate. So again, if the budget that we are currently utilizing and asking voters to please support, if that same budget was being represented, we would see a significant, actually, Dummerston was hit pretty much harder than any of the other towns that now, again, a new school board would have control over creating a new budget and, and, you know, working, they would have to work with those numbers, actually, because we would far exceed the, the state cap where we step into a penalty. And I don't have my notebook with the right numbers, but it was close to $3,000 difference. I think it was $2,720 over per pupil would be the shift using the current budget that just our school is holding. So it's, I don't have a lot more I could offer, especially without pulling up documents. And I, I wouldn't even want to try to tackle that. That's what we have our finance person to do in the office, but that is sort of the, to the point of it. And again, it's based, I'm just going to keep saying, it's based on the current budget that we have put forth in front of the voters, just, just taking that same budget and looking at it as if Dummerston were suddenly a freestanding independent school district.
Christina Naylor, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
So I just want to expand on that. A little piece on both Jody's choice comment and then how that would impact the actual tax, the final tax rate. I don't know if any of you remember all the gyrations on understanding our tax rate in the past. But the students nine through 12 that attend BUHS figure into our tax rate. Sometimes that was favorable, sometimes not. In the event the district became a Vermont choice town like Vernon currently is, the electorate could choose to send Dummerston students to private schools or other public schools and their tuition rates would determine how much we spend for those students. So the statute reads, we, the electorate could determine up to three schools to send our students to in the event Dummerston became a choice. I'm not speaking for or against. I just want to lay out what the statute says. So there's different statutory requirements for how public schools and private schools are compensated for the students that they would receive from Dummerston. So it's impossible to understand what the full tax rate would be for nine to 12 students until the electorate has voted. I know Vernon spends about, I, I contacted Carrie Amidon and Vernon spends about 17.5 for their six through 12 students. But we might have a very different mix and we may choose different schools. So that's only how one town is figuring out their tax rate. So it's really an impossibility, as Michelle said, to determine what the tax rate would be, especially when, because a new board would determine the pre-K through eight spending. And then I would think that if the electorate chose all BUHS, that'd be a very clear, a clear tax rate calculation. But without the electorate determining where students are going, you couldn't possibly know.
Thank you, Christina, our former school board chair. Ellen Rego, who's one of our teachers, would you like to speak? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I don't know who to direct this question to. But I, I think that what Christina just said was very important. And I'm curious, if we had more time to do the, the planning for this, would we be able to form those relationships ahead of time with those schools? And therefore understand better what the implications might be for our tax rate?
So Ellen has asked a question. Michelle, Christina, are one of you able to answer that question about having more time before we move into a process like this? If you would like to respond, there you go, Michelle.
Right. I muted myself and then couldn't go backwards. Ellen, I think if I'm, I'm hearing your question correctly, I, I, you were asking if we can begin the process, maybe through the dissolution process. And now you probably have muted yourself, so I can't clarify.
I think she was asking specifically if we had more time to form relationships with possible destination schools for our upper class students, the nine through 12th grade, would that be an advantage perhaps?
So not really. I, I don't know that you can gain more time. Certainly, if you're asking, like, if our community could have more community engagement and discuss what we want to see as a community happen and get a feel to have some, to be able to predict maybe the direction that voters would go, that might be a positive. As far as the, the powers of a school board that would be taking us through a transitional period, they're, they're limited to just having the powers necessary to separate from the Wyndham Southeast School District. So that would be creating a budget and probably representing like contractual changes with teachers and that type of stuff. But they don't have the power to begin the process of establishing relationships with other schools or, or creating, you know, impact studies or anything like that that would need to come with working together. And, and also I'll just, just in case it's not clear, because this question is about if Dummerston were to leave, the, the only way that all, all four towns could come back and, and create a regional high school situation would mean if there was a total dissolution. So if just Dummerston left, that, that, there would not be a path for that. I did look into it. And the Wyndham Southeast School District would not be able to divide itself essentially to share that with other towns. So if it's, it would have to be all or nothing, basically. So I hope that answers your question.
I want to make the point that while I said earlier on that each person can only speak once to an issue, unless everyone else has spoken for the first time who wishes to. I'm calling on Michelle repeatedly because we have elected her as one of our representatives from Dummerston to the school district. And she is more knowledgeable about this than any of the rest of us. Christina, you spoke once before. You have your hand raised again. Christina Naylor. I'm guessing it's because you want to also provide an answer as you did the first time. If that's the case, please go ahead and let's open up Christina, please. There you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow along a little bit for Ellen. The amount of tuition that is, is sent to a private school is determined by statute. I think it's around 15,000, but I've been out of the game for almost a year now. So, and then what you send to BUHS is the published tuition rate for BUHS. If we were to send, send students to Leland and Gray, that would be their published tuition rate. So that's all determined by statute. We don't, you, you don't horse trade and, and set your own fees or get any bargaining by relationships. You might develop relationships that would help indicate how many students would go one place or another, which would then impact our tax rate. But the tax, but the tuition rate is set by statute and that's published every year.
Thank you, Christina. Linda Rude, you have your hand up. You're unmuted. If you can turn on, there you go. Go ahead.
I want to ask a clar, clarify for a clarification. When all of this came up, there was, the idea floated that there was a possibility that the legislature was going to be closing the loophole that allowed small towns to withdraw from their mergers. And I want to ask the question as if, is that the case? Is there, is there anything pending in the legislature that would close that loophole?
Michelle, can you answer that question for us?
And Cindy, Roger, I also have a question, but I'm going to show up as Linda Rude.
Fair enough. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, so there, that, that was, that is speculated. The State Board of Education had made some comments saying as much when the first case of Reedsboro and Halifax, when they were separated. So there was, there was, there's a reasonable speculation there. However, the legislators, we've checked in with everyone in our area and there's, there's currently nothing pending. And the feedback we've gotten from our legislators is that this is not something that interests them right now. They have, they're looking at a number of other more significant things that need to be dealt with this year regarding our students. I do know that there's actually some new legislation that is specific because currently the statute that we would be pursuing does not clearly grant us a path as a state-formed district to withdraw. The wording in that statute actually specifies a town that voted to form is a unionized school district can vote to leave one and we didn't vote. We were state-formed. So Mike Maricki has actually introduced legislation to create something that would specifically allow a path for a state-formed district to withdraw from a unified district. So that's, so if anything, it's the opposite right now. But of course, I can't predict what legislators will do.
So there's Michelle and Roger, if you'd like to ask your question now, go ahead.
Thanks. My question has to do with the hypothetical tax rate if we were to revert to our local school board. And my assumption would be that the, the hypothetical tax rate is based on the current budget as it's been developed for this, for the whole district. In other words, it would be to fund all the programs which are now currently available to Dummerston kids through the Unified School District. So could we therefore assume that if the school, if a local school board was formed and was trying to knock that budget back down? So it's, so it, it comes more in line with the thresholds that, that are, we're asked to meet. Could we assume that that would mean that programs and services would have to be cut to, to reduce our tax rate from the current hypothetical?
I think that's pretty much just what you were saying, Michelle. And I see you nodding your head that the way to keep the tax rate level would be for the new board to make some real changes, that is, cuts in the budget.
You're muted, Cindy.
Thanks, Michelle. Roger, if that wasn't a sufficient answer, then I can ask Michelle to expand on it. But I think, I think that's pretty much it. Jody, I see your hand, but you have already spoken once. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Article 13? Yes, I see Jessica Nelson. There you are. Jessica, if you can unmute.
Go ahead. Hi there. So my understanding from sitting in on a number of the school board meetings is that the school board attorney agrees with the A O E attorney that they're kind of, as Michelle was saying, there's no law at this point that provides a process for a town to withdraw from a district and suggests that litigation may be necessary in order for us to withdraw since we were state-formed. Has the town attorney weighed in on, on this at all? Any, or come to a conclusion on necessary litigation that might have to happen? And who's paying for that litigation? As that goes forth, since there is no statute at this point that allows state-formed school districts to unmerge.
So Jessica, you're wondering if our select board has used our town attorney to weigh in on this issue? Those are going to bring some expense. Can a select board member or Charlotte answer this question? I see Zeke, your hand up, if you would like to answer this. You need to unmute, please. Zeke Goodban, could we unmute Zeke, please? Thank you.
No, we, we, the select board only went as far as putting these questions on the warning as a courtesy to the district. We've taken, as you said, no stand and we have not consulted an attorney on this, the town attorney. So it's, it's not under, school issues generally aren't under the purview of the select board.
Okay. Thank you, Zeke. Jody, I still see your hand. I need to ask again if there's anyone else who would like to speak to this question. Article 14, should other voters of the town of Dummerston authorize the town to withdraw from the school district, Wyndham Southeast School District for the first time? If anyone has a question. I don't see any other hands. You raise your hand by using the reactions button. If you don't see an option there, look under the participants page. Okay, I see no other hands. So Jody, if you would like to go ahead. Jody, you are both muted and you're not visiting. There you are unmuted. Can you turn on? Perfect.
Okay. I just want to speak, clarify a couple of things from my perspective. I want to stand up for the W S E S D board in what they have done in putting this vote out. I, I know the time is short, but they did know the Board of Education and the Agency of Education and at their meetings in December and in January. And then the Chair of the State Board of Education went to the Senate Education Committee to encourage them to change the law. So this wasn't an imaginary thing. And there's also a letter on one of the legislative websites pages from Oliver Olson, who's on the State Board of Education, encouraging this to go along with the John Carroll, who was the Chair. The other thing that's in, in, in the wings right now, I watched Laura Sabalia and Carolyn Partridge speak to the Wyndham Central Board. And they're working very hard on getting this new waiting study in, which would really be helpful for our smaller districts. And they said that they didn't think that it would, the waiting study would actually And they said that they didn't think that it would, the waiting study would actually go into effect for another year or so, but they did say that what they thought and hoped for, that they would, they would do away with the thresholds for this next year before they could go ahead with the waiting. And that would make a big difference for a lot of communities. I mean, you've got Wyndham Central up there, their organization, they're per students twenty-three or something thousand dollars a student. So I just want to put those things out there that so much is unclear right now that is happening. I hope it's all to all of our benefits, whatever ends up happening. Thank you.
I see someone named Elians with their hand up. I don't know if that's a last name. We've been asking people to rename themselves so their full name is visible to us. But if you want to go ahead and turn on your video and unmute yourself and tell us who you are. There, if you can unmute and tell us your name.
Hi, I'm Eve Leonz. And I'm just wondering what benefits has the school seen since we joined the merger?
Is there someone who would like to speak to that question? Michelle, I don't know if that's something you want to take on.
Half anticipating that our principal or Molly Stoner might be a better person since they have the firsthand experience. I think they're both in this meeting.
Wonderful. I'd love to call on our principal.
Going to encourage them to answer.
Julianne Egan, I believe. Julianne, would you be willing to speak to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Julianne Egan, Principal of Dumerson School. So trying to keep my comments brief, but I think really from, from my perspective right now, everything is in the context of this pandemic, right? And the challenges we've faced as a result of that. For everyone in the Dumerson School community, all the staff members, everybody, classroom teachers, facilities, crew, parent educators, nurse, staff, everyone, it's been the most professionally challenging experience we've had in our lives. And I don't think we will ever have an experience equivalent to this. It's required us to completely change every single aspect of the educational experience and collaborate with, with families and students in completely new ways. The Dumerson School community has been, I mean, it's, it's hard to even talk about what we've experienced and just the breathtaking nature of the collaborative effort that has occurred. I can't say enough about the, how people have come together. Families, staff, community members to really support Dumerson School students through this. In terms of how we work together as a district, it's been really vital for us to work with other schools in the district. And there's, there's dozens of examples, but I'll just highlight a couple. You know, one is that we have a number of students, about twenty percent who are fully remote. We were able to collaborate with other elementary schools in the district to offer a fully remote experience. So those students are Dumerson School students who attend school with peers from other schools. They have teachers who are from Green Street, for example, or Brattleboro Area Middle School or Oak Grove, who are their teachers for this year. And those teachers have embraced Dumerson School students like their own. It has been so touching to read the report cards, you know, written by teachers who may have only visited Dumerson School, but they are really embracing our students. We've been able to maintain a relationship with those students, you know, through our guidance counselor, through me as principal and other activities, but their classroom experiences is with this remote academy. So that's, you know, one major example. We collaborated on food service, you know, providing meals for our in-person students, providing meals to families who are remote. That's something that, you know, systems for that are established district-wide. Professional development has been extensive in the district and teachers have really had to collaborate with their grade-level partners and other members of the district just to be able to offer the kinds of experiences we're, we're providing for students. We are, you know, for, up until recently, we were providing a, a two-day model. So, so teachers are working in-person two days and working remotely at the same time. Those experiences were made possible by the district-wide professional development that has emerged. Health and safety protocols. You know, we work with, as a district, to make sure that we are all executing the same health and safety protocols to maximize the safety of our students. So, you know, there's a lot I can say. The interdependence has been so important because it has been, you know, this experience has changed all of us as educators. And in a lot of ways, we've, we've learned a lot, we've come together. It's going to continue to change us as we work on really the recovery from the pandemic. And so I expect, you know, this collaboration across the district is going to continue to be really vital. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Julianne. Molly, I see your hand, however, you've already spoken, so I'm going to call on Carrie Newton first. Carrie?
Hi, yes, I did, hi, I have a son who is in second grade at Dumerson. Joe and I have lived in Dumerson our entire lives. And I just want to reiterate what Julianne said in regards to that our son is fully remote due to health conditions and reasons in our home. And the support, and I've asked candidly, would we be receiving this support if we weren't a unified district? Because that was important for me to know, and the answer was no. You know, he's receiving an amazing education from a teacher in Green Street School. He's receiving his counseling support still from the Dumerson School and are receiving remote meals from the district. So despite the, because of the pandemic, our son is receiving a top-notch education and still feeling part of Dumerson community and Green Street community. And I would just say that I would be curious in a positive way of what could this unified district do outside of a pandemic? Because what they've been able to do and provide for children on an individualized level is just unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Susan has not spoken yet, Susan Maggioloro. There you go, I'm, there you go.
I'm coming, I'm getting there. Am I on? I, I don't see.
Yes, you are, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, Susan, you muted yourself and we don't see you anymore. Can you try again to start your video and unmute yourself? We see you on mute and then you can speak.
Come on, there it goes. Okay. All right, so I just want to speak to, just don't mind me, I'm not good at public speaking. We, when we were putting together alternative governance structure, we, and that's what I also think we would be able to do at the SU level. One of the things was be able to hire all the teachers at the SU level and share them. We discussed, at the time, we didn't know of obviously the pandemic or Zooming, we didn't know about, but we proposed Skyping different teachers for different students in different, in different schools. And that was one of our proposals. And we had also proved that the AGS would, would be cheaper to our school and to other schools as opposed to the merger. And I'm not good at this, and I think other people could probably say it better than me. So if somebody wants to help me out on it, I know two of you are here. So that would, that's my comment.
You were on the school board, so I know you're.
I was, I was on the school board and I was also on the AGS committee. And I did a lot of, a lot of research on, on these items.
Thank you. Both Ellen and Molly have already spoken. Is there anyone else who wants to speak for the first time? Michelle, do you have something you feel should be added?
I, I just want to clarify, I appreciate Susan sharing her thoughts. I know it's, I'm getting a little bit more comfortable speaking in these settings. But just to bring it back to the question, the article that people will be voting on, this is a situation where we're only voting on our school leaving the district. And so we would be working with teachers that we employed, we'd be their employer. We wouldn't, we each, they would need a contract just with us. And so it's, it's not, it's not, we don't have the same options. And I just wanted to bring that back to, this would be specific to Dumerson leaving and being its own school district. And the other towns would still be the Wyndham Southeast School District and separate.
Thank you for bringing us back to the article. I see no one who hasn't already spoken yet. So Molly, Molly Stoner, I'm calling you now. Unmute, there you go.
Yeah, I think the other time I spoke, I just asked for the information sheet, but it's great to have a chance to speak now. Thank you. So I, I just want to echo what Julianne had said. She said many of the things I was thinking. The, the one thing I would just share as a teacher, I teach fourth grade at the school, is, and, and it's really hard to discern out what's pandemic and what's merger, you know? Because they happened close to simultaneously. But one of the things that I've really noticed is this, it's like a comparison in a healthy way, if that makes sense. So schools are noticing programs that a different school has that they might not have. And it's not like a competitive thing, like, oh, we need that, you know, or like, we should take that. It's like, oh, I see the benefit of that, can we make it happen? And some ways that I've seen Dumerson students benefit in that way is through more technology services. We were pretty slim on technology services in the last however long. And then also outdoor play and study spaces. Just in, in turn, some of it may be financial, but also visioning. And I think that inspiration that schools are getting from each other is something that people may not have anticipated, you know? I don't know that I thought conceptualized that before, but it does feel very real to me. And so I just wanted to sort of share that perspective as a boots-on-the-ground person.
Thank you, Molly. Ellen, Ellen Rago. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. Just thinking back, reflecting on what you said, Susan, you know, Act forty-six was so divisive and this merger was so unpopular. And, and it's really tempting to want to go back to the way that things were before the merger. And I think it's tricky to remember that that's not possible, going back to the way things were before the merger is not an option. And it, you know, the, the work, the incredible work that the school board did on budgets before the merger. It's, things are different now, and I don't know that we can compare the numbers that you guys were able to magically come up with for those budgets to what we would have available to us if Dumerson were to leave this, the, the merged district. And so it's just sort of a cautionary, a note of caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I'm going to point out the time. We had thought of wrapping up this meeting at, at eight o'clock, which was when the select board planned on having their last meeting of the town year. But I will ask if anyone else feels they have something they really want to say or share about this particular article before we move on to Article fifteen. I'm seeing no hands, so if we could clear hands and mute if you've left yourself unmuted, we'll move on to Article fifteen. Shall the voters of the town of Dumerson conditionally approve and ratify the withdrawal of the towns of Brattleboro, Guilford, and/or Putney from the Wyndham Southeast School District, subject to the certification of results from the respective town votes to withdraw on March second, 2021? So I think this is pretty clear. The question is, will we, if, if any town votes to withdraw, everyone else has to approve that? And are we willing to approve that if other towns want to withdraw? Are there any questions about this? I think Article thirteen was closer to a lot of hearts than this might be. I'm not seeing any hands. Michelle, you'd like to speak?
I, I just will make one comment. I just want to make sure it's clear that the way that this works is that if a town votes yes on the first question, and if all four towns vote yes on the second question, at that point, that, the town that voted yes on the first question, their vote would be certified and that would be forwarded to the State Board of Education, and it would be subject to their decision and approval. So I just, it's not a done deal once the voters have, have done what, have weighed in.
Thank you. Tammy McNamara, I see your hand. You are unmuted, we don't see you yet. There you are, go ahead.
Hi there. I assume this question would be for Michelle, but Michelle, how would it affect our town specifically if, say, we stayed in the merger and we voted yes to allow another town to leave? And say another town left the merger, how would that affect our school?
So we did run through using the same, the same, the same way that we came up with the hypothetical numbers based on our current budget. And we pulled out each town, different combinations of towns. And, you know, ultimately, when you have less students that are part of a school district, your, then your costs go up that, the way when you look at the remaining budget. So in every scenario, based on the current budget that we're using, whether we pulled out one town, two towns, or, or three towns, or a total dissolution, there was an increase in student spending, which would mean an, an increase. You know, it, there would, it would be made up in, in taxes or budget cuts.
Todd Davidson, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is really for Michelle. If, if all four towns were to vote to allow anyone to leave, if Brattleboro chooses to leave, how does that affect the high school? Doesn't it really just end it all for all of us?
No, that's the tricky one that we, on our long form, you'll see that question asked, and we, we left it at, it's unclear. If all four towns were to leave and there was a total dissolution, then, then the high school and middle school and Career Center would, would fall down under Brattleboro because it's, it's within their town. If just Brattleboro left, which is fairly far-fetched, but if just Brattleboro left and Putney, Guilford, and Dumerson chose not to leave the Wyndham Southeast School District, it's conceivable that they could remain and the high school would stay with that district. They, Brattleboro can't break up a K through twelve district, basically. What would more likely happen would be, you know, I, again, this is, now I'm speculating, but this, I would imagine that, again, the State Board of Education would have to determine, you know, if it's in the best interest of the state, the student, and the district as it remains. And so I couldn't predict their call on that. But the high school, in that situation, Brattleboro could withdraw, they would not take the high school. And the part that's unclear is whether or not they would have to pay tuition to send their students into the Wyndham Southeast School District to go to high school. Because that gets a little, that's where things start getting fuzzy and blurry and ultimately would probably take future decisions by the State Board of. future decisions by the State Board of Ed to, to pick that apart.
Michelle, you've been very useful to us this evening. Thank you. I don't see any other hands. So I believe that we have reached the conclusion of our meeting. I want to thank you all. I think this has gone splendidly. Thank you for your participation and your questions and your concerns. Please do remember to vote. If you'd like to get an absentee ballot, you can call the town office and ask Lori, our town clerk, to meet you while the office is open. She will hand you one out the front door. That needs to be returned by Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Or you can vote in person in the basement of the center church from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It is not in the school this year. Thank you so much.